Universal Properties Services, ZB that two zero one nine that zero seven. MKHPP two zero one nine that zero one. Site line, area of payment for the conversion of gasoline station oil retail, retail use into a gasoline station D W use at one twenty seven East and Avenue, block seventy one, block twenty nine thirty yard and thirty three.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the board members will be hearing an application seeking a, seeking relief from conditional use standards for the gas stations, the D three variants. There are C variances for front yard setback, side yard setbacks, building coverage, freestanding sign setback, and design waiver for the drive aisle with counsel, is that correct?
That's correct, counsel.
Just before you start, um, can I ask you to call for the, I mean.
Yes, sir.
And is there any member of the board that has a conflict with this application?
What is this application?
Uh, some member of the board.
How about I go? Okay. Here you go.
Okay. So, anyone have a conflict? Uh, please, please go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, good evening, uh, members of the board. Uh, my name's David Himmelman, and I'm your attorney, and I represent the applicant, Universal Properties Services. As your counsel indicated, um, this application is for preliminary and final site plan approval, deuse variance relief, and a sequel variance relief. And for the record, Mr. Chairman, as you indicated, it's block seventy one, block twenty nine oh one, it's, of course, located at one twenty seven East and Avenue. Um, the property consists of approximately thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two square feet and is located in the C three B community commercial office district zone here in the city. The applicant seeks, as you know from the application, to continue the sale gasoline on site and to convert the existing service garage into a convenient retail store. The auto repair use will be discontinued at the property, which you will hear from the applicant and our experts. Pursuant to your ordinance, the proposed retail use for the property is permitted use in the C, in, in, in the zone. The applicant proposes to provide seven parking spaces, which also includes one handicap pursuant to your ordinance, and that conforms. The applicant proposes significant upgrades to the existing conditions at the property, including new lighting, landscaping, and facade changes to the building. As you know, from your planner's memorandum, the existing gasoline sales are conditional use in the C three B zone. However, since the gasoline stations predate the conditional use ordinance adopted by the city, the applicant cannot comply with some of the conditions, which in fact are considered pre-existing non-conformity, which brings us before you tonight. There are several deviations from the conditional use standards, which are pre-existing, uh, which you will hear from our engineer and planner. There's also, uh, several seat variant, seat bulk variances sought relating to signage and building coverage. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have several witnesses tonight. First is the applicant, uh, then we have our engineer, Shree Valley from Ameritech, Frank Ayo, our project architect, and lastly, our planner, Frank Cantosell, who will be testifying on the justification from the, uh, for the variances, and go through all of your professionals' reports as well. So I don't have any further remarks. Um, and Mr. Chairman, if you would permit me to proceed, we can bring up our first witness.
Please.
Okay, so please.
Please say your names, what's your last name? K A Z M I. First name?
S Y D D.
Uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, may I proceed?
Good evening.
Evening all.
So, would you briefly explain why you're here this evening, the nature of the application, and the belief you're seeking, uh, and what you would like the board to consider?
Good evening. Um, we're here to convert the existing, uh, business at one twenty seven East and Avenue from the core garage repaired to a C store. Um, we're looking to convert the, uh, core garage into a C store. We operate approximately thirty locations throughout the United States, uh, with the various brands, major brands, Shell, Exxon, and BP, just to name a few. Um, and we're looking to redo the, uh, facility itself to bring out a better, uh, facility for the city and for residents and for consumers. Currently, the, uh, garage, repaired garage, in our standard is not up to the par of the city's standards, to visual standards and inter-operating standards. So we're looking to upgrade each building, remove facade changes, uh, lighting, landscaping, as mentioned, uh, as we convert that into a C store, which could be convenient and a safe operating, uh, business for our local residents along with our development stores.
So, uh, just so the board and the public's aware, so when you say "we," could you give a little background about your company and your relationship to this property?
Sure. Uh, when I say "we," we have a great group of team that helps us operate these stores to make sure that they're operating according to local rules, federal laws, and regulations, um, to help us to make sure that these stores are being operated correctly. We have a group of fifteen employees that work within our organization in our, uh, office facility to assure that the sites are being maintained, um, well-kept, um, and operating to high standards, um, in this demonstration.
And so you, just so the board's aware, so you operate, your company operates other similar facilities throughout the United States, correct?
They do, they do.
Counsel, can you intro?
Sure.
Just a moment. I'm sorry.
So. My phone's too small.
That's okay.
Um, okay, so, um, and you are currently under lease with the current property, is that correct?
We are. We're under current lease with the assumption that we can redevelop this property, uh, into a C store, uh, to make it beneficial for us to operate the, uh, facility. But that being said, uh, to your second question about operating different brands, we do have multiple brands that we operate, um, and I am the hundred percent of the company.
Okay. Now, when you say "C store," I presume you mean the convenience store?
Could you maybe, so I correct that?
Okay.
I apologize for the, uh, uh, technical terminology of the industry.
Um, just give the board a little indication of what you intend to, uh, have in this convenience store, what, what type of products do you intend to sell?
Yes, we're gonna send your daily convenience items, you know, your, uh, your candies, your soda, uh, beverages, um, healthy snacks, along with tobacco products. Uh, our organization is a strong, uh, are very in strong opposition of vaping products. So all of our stores, even though they're regulated, allowed by law, we don't sell any vaping products. Um, we were taking a strong stand actually within the, uh, fight against stopping, uh, vape, open per se vaping products. Um, so this store will not, at least people in America will not sell those products. We're just very safe for the community and we're safe for, uh, and helping to encourage new change within the industry. So these stores are gonna be selling your, uh, you know, your daily products, like your household bag of chips, your, uh, potato chips, your plates, cups, something daily residents are gonna need. Um, we do have the facility size to incorporate a lot of the products that your, your day-to-day needs are for the local residents and for the ones, college students as well, for your books, pens, papers, et cetera.
So the thought process is you're gonna continue the gasoline sales, correct?
That's correct.
And presumably the customers that come for the gasoline sales would most likely then potentially purchase some items that could be the store?
That is correct. You know, in this industry, from the ones that we operate, you get majority of your customers are just getting, you know, a fill-up, and just wanna run inside and grab a bag of potato chips, and so that's all. But feeling like they're filled, they'll go inside and get what they need, and they're off to their way. Gives them a one-stop shop, uh, for a, for a, um, store.
Sure. Um, thank you. Um, in Big Bell Plannings Consulting Memorandum, uh, July fifth, there was an indication that they would like some testimony relative to any environmental contamination that may be on the site. Can you briefly address that, please?
So here we've allowed, we're mandated by the Department of, uh, New Jersey Environmental Protection to make sure there's no leaks of the tanks, that the pumps are operating, and that, um, all lines are clear and free of any abrasion. So we have just passed that, uh, last month actually, which allows our gas station to be operating. Now let me discuss the fact of the environmental. So this property was sold back in two thousand and ten or two thousand and twelve, um, to Circle K, uh, wholesale, which is essentially the property manager. Now, when they sold the property, they did environmental testing just to make sure there's no leaks or anything under there. I'm just, uh, customary to how you conduct the properties of, uh, sales, the asking then. So they conducted these sales, they did a phase one and phase two, which they installed monitoring wells underground to make sure the groundwater and ground soil is not contaminated. So they run these tests, uh, once every year for a period of three to six years, just to make sure that if, if there is contamination, how to correct it, and if there's not, a different firm. So we do have ta, uh, results showing and testing that the groundwater and ground sample levels are not reportable by the D P standards, so there is no contamination at the facility.
Right. So, so just to summarize the testimony, so the, during the due diligence process of a current owner, prior closing on the property, they installed some wells just to assess if there was any contamination. Your testimony is there, there isn't any.
There isn't any.
And they just keep those wells in as proportionary so they can test periodically to see if there's been any?
Exactly. These monitoring wells don't hinder the site performance. Uh, daily come out once every year, just take a sample just to make sure that groundwater levels are good. And they don't harm the facility, and also these companies use us in that extra expenditure, we wanna make sure that there is no contamination. Um, so they test these levels, and there's proof, like testing for the levels of the, uh, ground and soil level, that there are, uh, above, we're, we're good to go.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, do you have any else you'd like to add, or bring to the board's attention about the application?
Right, I'd like to make, uh, aware that the, if you were to approve, uh, this, uh, change, uh, it would bring good benefits in not only to the area, but you were gonna, the current store is very, according to my personal standards, I would've sent my mom there, so I wouldn't have sent my customers there. Um, it's very depleted, um, it's, it's, it's deteriorating, and it's not safe. Um, so if you don't operate out of there, even though we're allowed to operate the C garage until the meantime, until we get our zoning approved, uh, yeah, we've done so for life, I don't think it's great, um, it's not a, it doesn't look good for the safety. So once we upgrade this, I can do assure you that according to our business standards, local laws, federal laws, um, and just city aesthetic values, that this place would be your, uh, it would be a great center stone, um, for cleanliness, um, operating levels, and as well as just aesthetic views. It would, uh, it would help to promote what the standard should be in the city.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions of the applicant, but the board members?
Any other questions, please?
What are your hours of operation gonna be?
Uh, we're gonna be, uh, currently we're six at ten, and we're gonna continue now.
Six AM until ten PM?
Ten PM. We are in talks of going twenty-four hours, we do have the busy operation to do so. Um, so just based off of what, um, we decide together as a city and of, along with our team, to see which operations are best suits the store. Uh, but we are open twenty-four hours, and we can't keep it the same six to ten, it's, uh, that's not a.
Hi. Do you also control, along with the C store, the gasoline distribution?
We do.
That is also yours?
We do.
How long have you owned this property, or leased this property?
Uh, we took forward, we started a lease agreement in November of twenty eighteen, um, but we had it went in until December.
John, did you have something? I know, just to say, I'll ask you how many hours.
So I just wanna clarify, the gas station also closes, like, gas company also stops at ten?
We do, so. We do, so we turn off our breakers and pumps, so that way there's no dispensing going on at night. It's not safe for the community, god forbid someone pulls away and is unattended, you know, you don't wanna, uh, make a hazard, so we do close that. But if you do decide to go twenty-four hours, then we'll have, we'll have a staff, uh, after.
Well, I, I don't understand, you're gonna have six to ten hours, or you're gonna go twenty-four hours?
Uh, six to ten.
So you're not gonna go twenty-four hours, like, a few months down the road, why don't you open up?
Uh, our plan currently is not to go twenty-four hours.
I think what the applicant was indicating is if that was not problematic, and the board would weigh in on the twenty-four hours, they would consider it, but for the moment, I think they're considered, they're, they're gonna be six AM to ten PM, correct?
So let me just speak to that then, because I would find that problematic, twenty-four hours. But if there's nothing in the city right now that's open twenty-four hours, and in that area, I think that would be a problem.
Fair enough.
Six to ten.
I have a question. You guys mentioned about not selling vaping, because, you know, the danger to the community affects. Will we sell them cigarettes?
Cigarettes, yes.
Okay.
Any other member of the board have a question?
Hi. Mr. Sayre, could you just, just in terms of, uh, public safety and the safety of your employees, can you just explain to the board, um, what sort of safety precautions you have for the workers, if a person, you know, you don't like to see if, if there's attempted robberies or something like that, sometimes the gas station, if it's having lots of cash?
Yes.
Let's see, are there cameras, are there panic alarms?
Yeah, so I would, uh, thank you for bringing that up. So our, all of our facilities are equipped with twenty-four hour surveillance, not just having cameras up, but there's actually a dedicated team that's watching these stations twenty-four hours a day. So if they notice anything suspicious, they alert either a local manager, or the local city police, fire official, whoever is required to do that, or the site. Uh, part of our team is, and also in addition to that, we have panic buttons at every single one, every single employee has one right in their pocket, so they're allowed to keep anything else besides, like, in case they get robbed, you know, they're simply present, that way the police are alerting. On top that, we have a very strong, um, um, employee handbook, which entails exactly what procedure to take part if some, god forbid, something happens. Um, we are staffed with enough people so in case something happens, there's always someone else there to assist in the manner that one person may not be able to. Um, so being part of the C store, you're having a dedicated person for the field, a dedicated person for inside the store, so god forbid something happens, we are covered. Um, we also do have, um, you know, fire alarms, safety alarm, burglar alarms, um, so in case something like that happens, we are covered. Safety comes first, and we've noticed that throughout our entire operations, it always ends up saving you in the long run, just spending a little bit money upfront and getting it done right there.
Uh, you, you indicated that you took over this building about December of eighteen, correct? How come one of the glass doors today had been broken for at least three or four months and nothing has been done?
Yeah, so there, the left door being referenced, you have it right at the bottom. Um, we made a report, so currently it's totally, um, zoned into a C store operations, the landlord are taking responsibility for the building. And one of the part of having it, we zone into C stores, they won't be responsible for the entire operations. Um, and as you've probably seen, currently the way it's being operated now is not according to standards. So one of the benefits of us taking over, so these little issues, I don't have to call, you know, the landlord, as soon as there's a broken glass, I can call a local company, help fix it and, uh, move on. So, um, that is part of the reason that we wanna convert this into a C store, so that we can have full control over the building.
Right. Any other questions?
No, I do.
Hi, the next witness, please.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, our next witness is Shree Valley, K A L Y.
Shree?
Yes.
I F E F?
I F, I F.
Okay. Um, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I do, may I proceed?
Excuse me.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know you've grabbed before this board, you've had credentials changed anyway since the last time you?
I still have my license.
That's good.
That's good.
Yes.
Well, except you, thanks for the.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Shree, I understand, under your auspices and supervision, you have prepared a site plan that's submitted in connection with this application, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I know that, um, there's been reports from the board engineer and planner, which we will presumably get to shortly, but if you could, uh, if you could walk the board through the site plan, uh, what the applicant is proposing, and obviously identify the variances for the record as well, and obviously we can proceed with additional questions. Thank you.
Excuse me. So it's no change to sheet one, two, from what was submitted? And what was being passed out is what?
It's just in, uh, color.
Colorized, uh.
Mark it as A one.
Yeah, we'll mark it as A one then, and I think there's objectors counsel, who's present, maybe he wants to take this.
I can have.
Can we say call?
A one.
Yep.
Colorized low light by the site.
It's the same scale.
Same scale?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's say, skill, sorry.
Shree?
Yes.
If you have to speak up, please.
Okay.
We're ready.
All right. So just for the record, we on, uh, we at the intersection of East and Avenue and Prosper Street, um, we are talking about lot twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-three. Uh, twenty-nine, twenty-one is a tax map, and formula known as twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-three. Uh, and that is, uh, shown on shee number eight of the city tax map. Uh, with respect to the existing condition, uh, just as a reference, the, uh, north is to the top of, uh, the, uh, the shee, um, and what we have out there, the existing gas station with the, uh, with the, uh, service garage. Uh, also, what you see out there as you get in and out of the site, you have four point of entry, four point of exit, each one of these access, uh, into the site, exit driveway, as to where operation, and it's just people coming in and out of the site, it's all over the place. Um, eleven parking spaces, uh, that you will see as you're coming in, uh, to the site on the right-hand side of the, uh, the building. The back of the building, quite a bit of a mess, and we're gonna try to clean that up. Uh, you have an existing, uh, oil tank, storage above ground, also antifreeze, uh, tank, uh, fenced area, and you have the pumps, uh, the underground, uh, storage, uh, area for the gasoline is on the left-hand side of the, the building, and two islands, uh, two cabinet for dispensers for the, uh, the, uh, the pump, for the, uh, using gasoline. You have the overhead door, three bays, and the building is about, uh, eighteen hundred, uh, eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four square feet. So that is the existing, existing condition out there. If you're there, you will see that the site lacks, uh, the ADA accessibility to the building. Uh, you also see the parking spaces, the undersized, the domino requirement. Uh, so with that said, uh, and with that traffic, uh, in and out of the, of the site, uh, uh, as I said, it's a big mess out there, so with that said, I'm, you also see there's a metal shed in the back area, uh, and a trash, it's not really a trash enclosure, but a trash container, uh, and some landscaping, uh, deteriorate landscaping, lighting, and it's not, the site's not functioning with the moderation of the site plan that we have out there. Uh, so with that said, our proposal is to chop the back area of the building and bring the building down to one thousand six hundred and ten square feet, and we can basically , uh, kind of, uh, inside, by removing the area in the back, we're also removing the above-ground storage oil tank, as well as the antifreeze, antifreeze and the fenced area, cleaning that area up and make it one-way operation, striving the area in the back of the building. Uh, also remove, will be removing the metal shed in the back area, uh, as well as the, the trash, uh, container, that will be, uh, within ten by ten, uh, fenced area. We had on our site plan as a fenced area, the, uh, your staff require to be block, uh, wall, um, to meet the, uh, building, uh, uh, the same building materials, uh, so that's what we have. We are removing the eleven parking spaces and bringing down to seven to meet the parking requirement for the, uh, the store, uh, that we are proposing. The seven parking spaces, there will be, uh, five will be parallel spaces as you're coming in, and it will be a one-way operation coming out of East and Avenue, that's the only way, that's the only end that you get into the site, that will be the first right way on East and Avenue away from the intersection of Prosper. So we're cleaning up the, uh, the site movements on site, one-way operation, going into the parallel spaces along the side of the building, five spaces, coming out the other side. So if you have a small car and you traveling through the site, that's your way out, as far as, uh, using the convenience store, or you can come one way out by the gasoline area. We're also proposing quite a bit of no parking area, so beside the back area, we're also in front of the, the store, we adding one parking space for ADA, uh, and that will be on the left side of the building, and making the, uh, the doors, as well as the sidewalk or the walk area accessible for the ADA. So that's our proposal as far as the building and the circulation, but we also removing all the landscaping, the obvious, you know, landscaping that we have out there, we're putting in brand-new materials, uh, that will be six feet in height, as recommended by, uh, the planner, and, so we're screening that. Uh, so beside the trash enclosure and the landscaping, we're also removing the lights, we're bringing more of, uh, L D D light, uh, up to moderation, uh, that will soften the lights on the ground, and we were very careful with the light distribution as far as the residential area around us, we keeping everything about point five, one, uh, foot candle, so we're not brightening the area, the only area that would be brightened up is the area where we have the gasoline and the, uh, entry. So that's, that's the, uh, that's as far as the site plan. Uh, the utility is already there, so we're not proposing any utilities on site, uh, so that will stay. The sign that was already out there will stay, it violates three conditions as far as the size, uh, of the sa, uh, the sign, as well as the height and setback that is already pre-existing condition. Uh, there's two other pre-existing condition that we have, we don't have any violation as far as the bulk requirement. As a matter of fact, we are reducing the building coverage on site by removing that back piece of the building, so that will reduce the building coverage on site. We also reducing the FAR, the F A R requirement on site, and previous coverage will be the same, uh, so we don't have any bulk requirements. So we have five or six, uh, existing design waiver, design exceptions, you can call it, and that got to do with the, uh, the driveway from in and out, some of the, uh, one of the driveways larger than what's the ordinary, uh, request or, uh, required, uh, however, that's an existing condition, uh, and also proximity to the property line as well as the, uh, residential zone. So that's all to the existing condition. This site plan is not bringing any new, uh, design exceptions, or as I said before, any bulk requirements, so it's a, that's what we have as far as the site plan.
Uh, Shree, if you could just go through, um, just referring to, um, Mr. Corley's memorandum of June eighteenth, what happened? Are there any items that you would like to address in his comments, other than, I know you've addressed them, all of them, or most of them in your testimony, but is there anything in there that you'd like to discuss or take exception to, or bring out on the record?
No, all the items that we have, and, uh, Mr. Corley's before, are achievable and will comply with the all the items.
Very good. And referring to, um, Big Bell Plannings memorandum of July fifth, same issue, I believe, um, on page two, there were planned review comments, and also some recommendations, but I think you've covered, uh, all of those items, is that correct?
That is correct. One of the items I was, uh, required was the six-foot-high ad pointing, uh, that's as far as the, the new materials, uh, shrubs, and we'll do that. The one thing is that I made, uh, I forgot to mention is that we're also adding a six-foot-high brand-new vinyl fence, although we are running from, uh, obviously the residential, the two-sided, to the residential. So that's also another item that we offered, used with this.
And you've addressed, um, the issue of the, of the tanks, which will be eliminated?
And the tank will be eliminated.
Okay. And, uh, the facade improvements, I believe our architect addressed that.
Yes.
Um, okay, is there anything else that you would like to add, or you think you've covered all of this?
I think I've covered just about everything.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any doubt, it's true, it was in your direct testimony, but happy, I'm sure, to answer the questions before your professionals may ask.
Any member of the board have a question?
Yes, I do. Uh, I'm just, can you please go over again, the entrance and the exiting by vehicles into, if they wanna enter the convenience, like, just go to the convenience store, not to get gas?
The, sure. So the, uh, at the intersection, uh, you have, uh, two driveways. Uh, the one that I was referring to is the entrance to the site, the third driveway on East and Avenue. Avenue coming from eastbound to west. So, that is the, will be the one-way, the all one-way operation, all the driveways, that's what we are proposing. So, you're coming in from Eastern Avenue, from that driveway, and you can go into the parking spaces on the side, the five parking spaces, and if you decided to go to the store, you go and you leave from the parking space, and you come one-way out into Prosper.
So, the exit will be on Prospect Street, which is a one-way, correct?
One-way.
So, the vehicle can only go to?
Travel one-way.
Okay, so what are you gonna do with the other driveway?
So, if you decided to come from Eastern Avenue, the eastern driveway here, and you decide to go to the, to go to fuel, so you'll be coming in and you're coming out into Prosper, or you're coming into Eastern Avenue as one-way out.
So, the other driveway will still be there?
It will be, be still the same configuration of the site, keeping everything as is, we adding one-way traffic area on the floor, on the, on the ground, signs, and as well as striding to, to give you much better understanding of the site.
Okay. Just 'cause my concern is that people aren't gonna wanna exit on Prospect Street, 'cause it's a one-lap.
Well, we have another one on Eastern too.
Right, that's what, yeah, 'cause, you know, 'cause people aren't gonna wanna go that way, if I'm gonna go the other way.
We, we prefer for everybody to come out on Prosper, so they come into the intersection, coming into ninety-degree head-on, where then coming into Eastern Avenue, but the driveway is still there. And we have plenty of amount of sites, so it's no problem with that.
Any other member have a question?
Yeah, I do. Regarding the signage on the corner, you're putting up a twenty-one-foot sign to replace the sign that's currently eighty?
The, the sign is gonna stay as is, as far as the area and the height and the distance from the driveway, etc., so we're not changing the sign. We are keeping the sign as is.
'Cause on the Big Bell Planings report, I mean, from number seven, it says provided one freestanding sign fifty-five square feet, twenty-one feet high.
Yeah, it's, it's just the existing sign.
Okay, existing.
That, that's existing.
So, you're gonna keep the same?
Existing.
Okay.
It's just, it's a situation that we didn't have any record of the sign ever being improved.
Right, but it's there, so.
It's technically a new condition, but it's effectively existing.
Okay.
It's pre-existing.
Yeah, it's the same sign, sorry.
Well, it was there when I went to college here, so. I won't tell you what year that was. Sure, have you covered everything, or do you wanna add anything?
No, I'm done. I'm good.
Any other member have a question?
Just clarification on how retail loading is going to occur and how gasoline delivery is going to occur.
Okay, that's very clear. So, as I indicated before, the back area of the building, going out, traveling within that area, you only have about, just about twelve feet wide area. We're opening that up to about eighteen feet, so we have a striding area in the back, but that's not the loading area. The loading area, as you're coming out into Prosper, you'll see the letter there says loading area, and it's about thirty-four feet long by, I would say, eighty, ten feet wide. That's the loading area as far as if you have a loading truck coming in for the store. And as far as the gasoline trucks, my understanding, I have not seen it out there, but my understanding from my client, that when you come in, you come from Eastern, and you're coming into, through the pumps area, and you, you pretty much stop right in front of the driveway leading into Prosper, and that's how it's been operated a few years.
Any other question, Alex? Saying done, your next witness, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next witness?
Not yet, go off and help at the end.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our next witness is Frank Aiello, who is our architect. And I do believe Mr. Aiello has smaller handouts which are consistent with what has been submitted, is that correct, Mr. Aiello?
Yeah, definitely. Handout, sure.
All right, so, what's the board mark you take to, I guess?
Sheets, there. Three sheets?
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Florence Aiello. Spel-ka-i-e-lo-lo.
And do you swear or affirm tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
May I proceed?
Mr. Aiello, good evening. I understand you are the applicant's architect on this matter, correct? Okay. And Mr. Chairman, I know some of you may be familiar with Mr. Aiello.
I do not, we remember him, say it.
Okay, that's fine, so we would have to, I think we'd have to have him qualified. So, Mr. Aiello, could you briefly give a summary of your professional background and your licenses that you hold, and whether you testified before this board or others in the state on how occasion you oblige site plan?
Of course, yeah, I'm a registered architect of State New Jersey for more than thirty years, a bachelor's license in architecture, B R A M, and a graduate certificate of historic preservation from Drew University. I'm a member of the historic department of preservation committee in Somerset. My office is at forty-sixth Bay Street, on a block away, and I'm prepared to be with numerous boards, most recently Randolph, Boarding Town, South Frontwood.
Thank you, Mr. Aiello.
Well, except for that, I forgot, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Aiello, good evening. You brought, I believe, exhibit with you this evening, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would you briefly, and the board is getting those handouts, but if you would briefly describe what our client is proposing in terms of architectural features, addressing the facade and the improvements, and then we can go through, any questions that the staff and the board may have, thank you.
What we're proposing, redesign and re-existing structure, like the Shell gas station, what we're going to do is significant amount of demolition, but we will be keeping the shell of the building, the perimeter walls. This might be of some help, this would give you some idea and orient you in terms of what, what's where and what's going there.
That's not part of the packet that you've handed out?
That's the elevation of the, of the gas station.
Photographs.
The photograph.
Right.
Has that, has that been submitted?
No.
Why don't we mark that as A3?
We'll mark that as A3, thank you. You wanna, do me a favor, why don't you just mark it and initial it, and put today's date on, A3, your initial.
Do you have a exhibit number?
A3. Very good.
The purpose of showing the photograph is to give you some idea what was, we wanted to do with the existing facade, existing building shell. We're keeping the, the gas station, but we're abandoning the service repair shop. I wanted to keep the three openings where the service bays are, and that's what you're looking at here. Those openings will remain. What we're gonna do, we modify the facade, close up the existing glass on the far left side, and close it with a composite panel. The base of the building will now be a, a here, stone veneer. The openings where the existing bay openings will become storefront on either side of a two-story entrance. At the two-story entrance, we have a canopy that's supported by aluminum columns that are slightly skewed out of plumb towards Eastern Avenue, and they're supported by two pedestals. We have a two-story, clear-story glass above the entrance, and that has a slight old roof overhang on it with brackets supporting it, to sort of mimic what's happening in the, in the columns below. Above the windows, we have fabricated fiber awnings, and above that solid panel, the Lefis, with a complementary color to match what we're doing with the, with the panel. Let me show you what I have in mind with that panel. This is a similar material that we wanna use.
That is A4.
We can mark that as A4.
Now, that panel will, you turn around the heads of the corner, you look at the other sheets of elevation, you'll see it return on the side. On the inside, we're, again, we're removing any, everything that's related to the repair shop.
Relating, I'm sorry, you're now on sheet two?
One oh one.
Making reference to sheet two.
And the, the plan now will just involve an open space for retail, for service, and a coffee station. We will keep some existing space, the electric room will remain. We will change the existing restroom and enlarge it so it becomes ADA compliant, and we're modifying the front, the existing office is definitely a beverage cooler location, access of a newly created corridor. We, we will be removing a section of the building, as the site plan indicated, there's a sort of fire lane that goes around the back, and there's a portion of the existing building that's gonna be demolished. The other side of the building will be finished with the highest material, beige, a complementary color to the panel that's going around.
Mr. Aiello, are there any other aspects of either the architectural features or the floor plan layout that you'd like to address before the board? Do you think you've covered everything?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I would note that in Big Bell's memorandum of July 5th, there was, your planner was requesting the applicant provide testimony on a proposed facade improvement, and that's nine G, and I think Mr. Aiello did address that, obviously, we can have follow-up questions, but I think Mr. Aiello indicated he's, for the most part, completed his testimony on the architectural features, but happy to answer any questions you're, you may have or you staff.
Any member of the board have any questions, yes, with, any professionals? Speaking of your next witness?
Thank you, Frank. Our next witness, Mr. Chairman, is our professional planner, Frank Antisell, who will be testifying on the justification for the use variance and the other variances sought, and if it happens to be, Antisell's qualified as well as an expert.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Frank Antisell, A-N-T-I-S-E-L-L.
You swear or affirm tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
May I proceed?
Have you gone before this board?
Uh, yes, it's been a couple of years since I was before this board.
Have you got to change at all?
No, I have not.
All right, but we will also have to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Antisell, if you would just walk the board through the nature of the relief sought, obviously, the use variance, which is pre-existing, not conforming under the conditional use ordinance, and the rationale and justification, your professional opinion for that variance and the other relief that we're seeing.
Sure. The proposed convenience store complies with the C3D community commercial zone. However, the existing gasoline sales is a conditional use in the zone. In today's marketplace, the majority of new convenience stores that are being proposed aren't being proposed with gas stations. We are seeking D3D relief for conditional use, which does not meet all the conditions of the code. When you look at the deviations for the conditional use that are in your ordinance, there are three deviations that we do not need, that bring us before this board. The first deviation has to do with the distance between the exit driveway and the residential district line. The code calls for a minimum distance of thirty feet, and we are proposing six point five feet. This is a pre-existing condition, and we believe we've mitigated some of the impact by the extent of the closed-site design, where the driveway is now exit-only. The second deviation has to do with the maximum driveway width of thirty feet, which is the, which is the maximum permitted. We have an existing driveway along Eastern Avenue that is thirty-six point one feet. Again, it's a pre-existing condition, and we've minimized it somewhat by making it an entrance-only driveway instead of having it as a two-way driveway. The third deviation has to do with the driveway being at least fifteen feet from any side lot. The northwest driveway is six point five feet, and the southeast driveway is thirteen feet from the side lot lines. Again, these are, all these are pre-existing conditions, and we've mitigated the extent of the proposed, we've mitigated the impact of these by the closed-site design we've shown here. The positive criteria, we've showed the site remains appropriate for the use despite the deviation of the standards. Also, just to be safe, I want to advocate that the purpose of the municipal land use law, and I believe that the application would be supportive of that. In addition, when you look at the special reasons for the project, it will promote the MLUL, Purpose A, promoting public health and safety, and general welfare, and Purpose G, which is promoting appropriate uses to meet the needs of citizens. Also, the site remains in appropriate use despite the deviations, because when you look at your 2004 master plan, it recommends this lot for downtown commercial use. And the proposed use is consistent with the land use recommendation of your master plan. When we look at the negative criteria, we believe that the project is consistent with surrounding uses and does not impair the zone plan, and there are no, there's no detriment to the neighborhood, and the site is suitable for the project. There are three bulk variances for the signs, these are all pre-existing, for the pre-existing signs. The first is the freestanding signs must be a maximum of twelve square feet, where the existing sign is fifty-five square feet. The second is the freestanding signs need to be a minimum of five feet from the property line, where the existing sign is three feet from Eastern Avenue and half a foot from Prosper Street. Also, number three is the freestanding signs need to be a maximum height of eight feet, where the existing sign is twenty-one feet. These deviations are pre-existing and are required to make the sign visible to the traveling public. If you made the sign much smaller, if you brought it down to twelve square feet, it'd be very hard to see it, and most likely, you'd probably miss the driveway, and then have to try to turn around and come back to the site. So, we think, we believe from the safety aspect, the sign variances are warranted, and they're pre-existing conditions. We believe that the deviations are not significant, and the site can not accommodate these deviations, and the operational benefits would outweigh any detriment to, detriment from those deviations. The site would remain appropriate for this use despite these deviations for all those reasons and that I have reviewed. I believe that the site satisfies all the criteria and the positive criteria for this D3 variance.
Thank you, Frank. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you have any questions, your professionals, or our planner on his testimony?
Any member of the board have any questions? Any professionals have? Saying done?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our, our witnesses in terms of our affirmative application, and we are here, obviously, to answer any questions that were pursued accordingly. Thank you.
At this point in time, I'd like to open it to the public. Anyone from the public who would like to comment or question on this, please jump forward.
Say your name.
Name's John Varga.
Spell your last name.
V-A-R-G-A.
You swear or affirm tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
May I proceed?
John Varga.
Your address for the record?
Hi, me?
Your address for the record, please.
My home address is 280 Eastern Avenue. My age is seventy-one years old. I've lived and owned property in that block for, I'd say, fifty of those seventy-one years. I was born and moved to 121 Eastern Avenue, which is now a parking lot that used to be a Hungarian neighborhood, proceeded to purchase 119 Eastern Avenue, 117 Eastern Avenue, 115 Eastern Avenue, 53 Month Street. In the three meetings that we have, have had here, I have received no notices. Me showing up has been by word of mass, so I am well within two hundred feet of this proposed change, and I have never been notified. And look at your proposal, and I... I look at their proposal, and I listen to the present tenant. He said he's taken over the property since January, November, it makes no difference. One of the board members brought up the front window that was broken, and his explanation was, "It's not my problem." Well, I have a problem. You can't fix the outside bathroom door, the lock that's open. Now you're having homeless people come, and that outside door lock has been open for six months. I guess that's not his problem either. The other issue is cleanliness. Everybody in that block, if you go down that block any day, they're cleanliness. And we're a community that relies on each one. I know Anil, I know Frank, I know Andy, and I know those other ones. We look out for each other. There was no cleanliness there at all. I have a rat issue at 119. I have a tenant issue at 119, because supposedly, I'm going to say to you, there was drug dealing going out of the back door. But we didn't address that with my team of workers, did we? There was an abandoned car there for three months, which mysteriously disappeared two, three days ago. I have the plate numbers, and I have the person who came and stripped the car down. And that stayed there for three months, and now it's gone. I have a tenant, and I'll draw her name out, Ms. Smith, Mrs. Smith, who has lived on the second floor of 119 Eastern Avenue for approximately five years. She was now in fear of her life along with my wife. Because when this supposed drug deal was going down, one of the smart asses, I'm sorry to say that, wanted to know who the old lady was and who was the Oriental girl. The Oriental girl has been there for five years, and the people that stay in my houses are not your normal college kids, okay? I have professionals. Mrs. Smith, I have a lady on the first floor, her sister-in-law, who is a security officer. I have a guy at 117 Eastern Avenue that's probably been with me for 15 to 17 years. I call maybe my brother, I'm the only one, but that's how long he's been there. They're in fear of, the quality of life has changed dramatically and not for the best, it has deteriorated. You're trying to put in a gas station with a service center. The one thing that has not been addressed whatsoever, go there on Eastern Avenue around 7, 8 o'clock in the morning, and all the kids that are walking to school, and the kids that are coming back at 2 o'clock. And I'm saying, kids, the modern college kid now, okay? You and I learn to walk with our eyes up and to look. I'm going to give you an example of the college kid, okay? They walk like this, have no clue. They do not walk to the corner and make a quick right turn. They're going to be cutting across this station. Look at Wawa, look at Quick Check. You're telling me a Wawa and a Quick Check are going to put in parking for seven cars? Their parking spots are so big. My seeing-eye dog driving my car could get out. There is no way, this is my opinion, I'm entitled to be wrong. But right now, what's going on at this gas station is one-tenth short of a circus, okay? We have called police numerous times, okay? Because I hear from my tenants, and I address the issue. All of a sudden, my team of workers, how come there's a traveling car show going on there at night? Friday and Saturday night, and the lot is with yellow tape all around it. These guys come park their cars. If I'm the tenant and I'm the landlord, I should know what's going on. I don't want to hear, "I didn't know." "I didn't know" doesn't work, doesn't work. The way you've come in and presented yourself is the way you're going to run the business. Pictures are nice. I've seen what's gone on there for seven months, and I have tenants back there have lived it. So the quality of life, if you approve this, is going to deteriorate even more. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, Mr. Varga, if I could just say, Mr. Varga?
Yes.
You said you own 119 Eastern Avenue?
Yes, correct.
So you own that under an entity name?
Yes.
Okay, what's the entity name?
Under that entity name would be 119 Eastern LLC.
Right, I understand, okay. So a certified letter went out to you. Well, it was more unclaimed.
Well, guess what, I never got a notice from the post office. How am I supposed to know it's unclaimed if I never get a notice?
Well, the post office would have sent you a card indicating, "Well, I have proof of service, Mr. Chairman, I've sent it to your attorney, and I have a right to rely on the property owner's list, which I did, which was properly prepared by your staff, and I sent out the certified mail, and it was unclaimed." So I'm just putting it on.
Mr. Chairman, it does appear that 119 Eastern Avenue Associates LLC, 117 Eastern Avenue Associates LLC, 115 Eastern Avenue Associates LLC, for both 115 Eastern Avenue and 53 Mine Street, all have an address of 280 Eastern Avenue, which is not within 200 feet, but which notice was provided.
But could you look at the towns on all of them?
And by the way, all of those addresses that your attorney just indicated were also unclaimed for notice. I have all.
So I guess the post office is not doing their job three times? Are all of those notices going to New Brunswick, or is there anyone who's going to North Brunswick?
Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to go through the 200-foot property list, and the certified mailings, and the certification provided by council. It appears that all of the mailings noticed is proper in terms of having been mailed out.
Mr. Varga, can I ask you a question? Do you own and operate businesses in New Brunswick?
Yes, I do.
And which property is that?
It's going to be 115.
And what type of business?
It's a restaurant.
Restaurant, what's the name of the restaurant?
Fritzes.
Okay, do you operate any other businesses, any other stores in the area?
No.
Okay, so that's the only business you have?
It's under my wife's name.
It's under your wife's name?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Will your client answer the questions about the possibility of drug dealing, or people hanging out, or this or that, and why was there an abandoned car sitting on a property?
Sure. Again, we'll call the applicant up who's still under oath. So you can do address Mr. Varga's question.
Chairman, so the car that's been parked there is a lot of, we called the police multiple times to have that towed, because we couldn't identify the true owner of that property. I spoke into the sergeant of the police force personally, and he tried to find out who the actual owner was, because we didn't have a sign testifying that we're allowed to remove cars from that property without notice. So they said, therefore, you can't remove a car and have it towed, because there's not proper notice given to the property owner that they can remove the vehicle. So what they did was there's a proper protocol that we had to submit to the Department of Motor Vehicle, with the VIN number to say that something like this was to happen. They gave us an authorization to tow, so in case it's Bob's, for reference, Bob Smith's car, and Bob Smith claims it was stolen, then Bob Smith knows where his vehicle went, and the Department of Vehicle would know that that's what the car wrecked. So with that being said, we did take the proper protocol to have it removed. Unfortunately, there are incidents where people just parked their vehicles, and we have no form of getting those towed out.
So is it an abandoned vehicle?
It was an abandoned vehicle.
All right, and are you making, you're making attempts to get that vehicle?
It was already removed.
It was already removed, okay, fair enough. And what about to the chairman's point about drug-related activity that Mr. Varga was referring to?
So, yeah, so unfortunately, it's not within our police powers to address drug control. We can do anything our power to help it. And one part of the reason to reconvert this is we'll have, currently the way the property sits, there's no lights in the back, and it's not monitored. So if you're back there, unfortunately, there's nothing, no one knows what's going on. So part of the redevelopment is to have lights in the rear of the building, install cameras. So now it's being monitored, and it's actually being used instead of being made in. So a drug issue would assist the local police force with the redevelopment, because then, you know, people can't hide behind broken cars or anything of that nature, because they're saying it's an active and used driveway then, at that point. We have on the record, you know, called police multiple times, but, you know, our employees can't go out there and fight drug dealers. It's not going to be a square foot work, but mostly we can use call police. And we have done that multiple times to address that issue. But with the lights in the back, with the cameras, it's going to deteriorate crime to a further degree to let people know, listen, there's lights and cameras back there, don't do any drug dealing. Now, they might get away with it, because no one's monitoring it yet. Hopefully, in the next couple of months, if this goes through, it'll eliminate a spot where a drug dealer can act.
Let me ask you a question. Would you, if the board were so inclined to approve this, but again, as a concern, safety, public safety, and making sure that this activity is contained, would you be open to some security conditions or some other conditions to ensure that this activity is reported immediately, and you have somebody who is on-site that can monitor the situation for a period of time? So at least we can report to the city, and there are safety measures employed to try and mitigate this activity? Would you be open to that?
I would 100% be open to that. And one of the things that we have done in the past for other municipalities or drug issues of recent, so like I stated earlier, there will be cameras throughout the entire city, which are watched 24/7. And we have given access to those IP addresses to local police office stations. We've done that in the past of the local, we have to discuss with the local police station to see if that's a possibility. So that way, they have eyes on the, not only, you know, from a safety standpoint, but if there's something that happens, drug dealing, they can identify who that was. Because currently, that isn't the case.
So with the camera system that you're going to employ, how does that, how will that work in terms of?
So there's, it's a 18-camera system, which covers the inside and outside of the building. And there's a dedicated team of ADT surveillance individuals, which monitor the site 24 hours a day. That's our contract with ADT, which supply our firebird layer surveillance. So there's an individual watching that camera, seeing what's going on. If anything irregular occurs, notify you right away.
And the back camera security system also cover the rear of a property?
It covers every square foot of the property, and we try to do five feet outside the property.
I have a question.
Yes.
If ADT is monitoring 24 hours a day, then they call the local police department?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so they're not going to call the office?
No, no, because if something's wrong, you don't need to know, you need to get it rectified. So it's their duty and within their contract or obligations to us to report that immediately. And they test that every periodically as well.
All right, and are you going to put signs regarding warning folks that you need your car here or a vehicle is allowed for over 24 hours in the future?
Absolutely.
And take action on it?
Absolutely. We have applied for a, with a tow company, local tow company, to have those installed even beforehand. I'm going to just think that to be commented, because honestly, that hurts our business. Because if you park a car, that's a space takeaway for a potential customer. So this would be a benefit to have that installed.
Will you put up signs that say, "No overnight parking"?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
We did have the police sergeant also request us to take a look into that. That's what prompted us, we want to work with the local community. So you don't want people parked overnight. And part of that agreement that we have with the local towing company is they're going to drive by every 15 minutes, and if they see a car, they're going to tow it. So that way, if there's enough notice, if they drive by, it's an unauthorized car, it'll be removed immediately.
You thought that that's going to be after you close at night?
Even throughout the day, even throughout the day. So if you park...
So they drive by every 15 minutes, and possibly someone's spending a half hour in the store and they're going to tell them?
No, no, let me clarify that. So if someone's parked there and they're confirmed with their employees, and this car is parked there, and do you know who it is? And of course, if someone's shopping, absolutely, you don't mind. But if someone parks there and goes down to cop, I mean, wherever they're going, and it's not an authorized vehicle at that point that's shopping with us, then they will be towed to limit. So I mean, if you shop in there for 45 minutes, you're not allowed to move your vehicle.
Fair enough. Mr. Chairman, I think the point here is that the applicant wants to do the right thing. They want to employ the right safety measures. No one's indicating that there's not an existing condition out there.
I agree, it's terrifying.
So we're open to all of those conditions, and it's, I think, in the applicant's best interest, he wants to run a safe and clean operation, and he wants to make sure that his patrons feel safe also, so.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Hello?
I apologize.
Just for a moment, getting back to Mr. Varga's notification. What address do you have on that letter that you showed him?
The address that's on the certified list.
I have it as 280 Eastern Avenue, Brunswick, 08901.
Okay, New Brunswick or North Brunswick? Because on this property owner's list you have here, one of them, Mr. Varga, you have 280 Eastern Avenue, New Jersey, 08902.
I have it as New Brunswick.
I have it as New Brunswick.
Okay, well, I'm just...
No, but that's not the, that's the engineer's printing, if you will. That's not the official list.
Okay.
And it's not, and I have several of those, all the properties that Mr. Varga was indicating were all returned, unclaimed.
The question is three times?
I have, again, I, your attorney will tell you, the obligation of the applicant is to obtain the certified property owner's list, to obtain it into the property owner's list, to provide published legal notice, and to properly serve all property owners by certified mail. And that's what I did. And I don't know why they were unclaimed, but it's interesting that they were all unclaimed.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification. There were four notices sent out to 280 Eastern Avenue, Brunswick, New Jersey, 08901, for the three different entities that we've mentioned. And on top of sending these out, the municipal land use law requires it to be sent out by certified mail, but not that there be a return receipt required. So applicant actually went, I guess, over and above by requesting return receipts as well.
Thank you.
Just getting back to the drug dealing, that was occurring back here. And we made the assumption it was going on at night, it was going on all day, and it was probably, what I was hearing, potentially being done by one of his employees.
Say your name.
My name's Jonathan Guarino. He's by the line, G-U-A-R-I-N-O.
Your home address?
115...
You swear, from tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
115 Eastern?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I do live at 115 Eastern Avenue. John Varga is my landlord. I also own 50% of Fritzes, the business which I own with his wife. We are affiliated, but I'm not going to address the same issues he did. I'd like to tell a quick story, though, about Mother's Day of this year in regards to car parking, and how we, you know, what's the correct way to conduct business on the street, and whether it was refuted or not, I don't know. But Mother's Day of this year, I had a customer come into the restaurant. She had parked at the gas station, which you should not have, it's not parking for there. But the gas station was abandoned previously to this gentleman owning it. And, you know, everybody parked there. It was just where people parked, because there's not a lot of parking there on Eastern Avenue. So she parked there, came in with, she was a middle-aged woman, came in with her children and her mother on Mother's Day. Came in, got food, left. Her car had a boot on it in the parking lot at the gas station. This was Mother's Day of 2019. And when she went back, she was told that the boot would be removed if she Venmo'd the owner of the gas station 200 and some odd dollars in order to remove the boot from the vehicle. And whether that's allowed or not, I don't know. It doesn't seem very gentlemanly way to conduct business in the neighborhood, and it's not something that anybody else seems to be doing. And that's just a story I wanted to mention. The other concerns I have are that the parking spaces, I've heard the number seven, I've heard the number 11, both mentioned. Currently, all the parking spaces at the gas station are rented out to construction workers in the neighborhood. So what's going to ensure that the spaces designated for the store are not going to be used as rental spaces for income on the property? And also, is renting the spaces currently an approved use on the property or not? I don't know. That's what's going on. The traffic signage, anyone that's spent time on that block knows the cars whip in and out. He addressed it, I'm not going to harp on it anymore, but it's just, it's a dangerous slot, you know? There's a lot of exits, and there's a lot of people not paying attention. And my bigger concern is the hours of operation. And I know that it was, you know, I mentioned six to 10, but my question is when the property, when the business is being operated outside of those hours, a year down the road or two years down the road, what course of action will I have at that point in order to make sure that that ceases immediately? Because I'm concerned that owning a business on the street, six to 10 is not your convenience store hours. Convenience stores make their money at nighttime. And we have plenty of them on the street right now that there's really no added benefit of adding another convenience store, sell the same products everybody else is in, selling. Beyond that, I've heard a lot about landscaping, and I have some photos here of two areas right on Eastern Avenue, well, one is on Eastern Avenue. This is the spot where the old NJ Books was located.
We need to mark this. We'll mark...
01.
Okay, 01 will be Eastern Avenue, Old New Jersey Books, and 02 will be Somerset and College.
Okay, so, sure. Those two photos represent two areas. Okay, so, sure. Those two photos represent two areas that were well landscaped at one point, and one is still pretty well maintained. But they both have issues with homeless people hanging out there and begging. And the bigger problem we have in New Brunswick is the ACLU lawsuit from two thousand fourteen, which doesn't allow the police to do absolutely anything about people begging. And that's not what I want next to my business or where I live, because that's what will come with this. Especially if you close at ten P M. You can have ADT call the police, but then when the police say, I'm sorry, we can't enforce anything, because they won't. I've done it. I call all the time when things happen. And there's only so much in the police power, and, you know, we have to make decisions based on what is going to work in the neighborhood. And I don't see the added benefit of, of this business. Sorry. The first time I was going to come here, three, three months ago, I actually typed up the whole thing. I was going to read, but I won't do that anymore. And I have been told in meetings, along with most of the other people in this room, there's been ten or eleven of us at all these meetings, because we feel passionately about it and want to make sure that our voices are heard. You know, those are the bulk of my thoughts, and I hope you understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you care if we address some of your other- Mr. Chairman, just a couple, couple of points. Again, I know the board's aware, obviously, the convenience store component is prohibited use of zone. And the applicant is preventing, is presenting a compliant site plan. We're only here because the, the pre-existing non-conforming variance is under the condition of use for gas station, retail public. So I want to remind the board of that. And also, I think the applicant, at some point, the board has to weigh, not only the professional testimony, but the sincerity of the applicant and his willingness to invest a tremendous amount of dollars into the site to rehabilitate and redevelop the site, and also to ensure that it's operated safely. No one is disputing that there has been a long history with this site. There's activity that is inappropriate going on. No one's, no one is disputing that. I think the point is, this is an opportunity to cure that law and to remedy that law. And the last thing the applicant wants is to be able to open up its business, should the board grant this favorably, and not ensure that it is properly secured and safe. The applicant's indicating that he has been working with the New Brunswick Police Department, will continue to do so. I believe that they're well, well aware of what's going on out here. And I think unfortunately, if we don't move in this direction, the problem out there may get worse. And that's what the applicant is here to tell you. Mr. Said would like to address a couple of points on that the president did make, and that had to do with the, I guess, the vehicle that was on the site and, and a couple of the other points.
Yeah, so I think the gentleman made a reference to drug dealing owned by the employees. You know, one thing I do want to testify, you know, they're constantly monitoring our employees with industry shops, which are conducted by the Shell brand along with us, to assure that the employees are complying with our standards, those local standards. You know, for us to allow our employees to conduct drug activity, it's not in my favor, and certainly not in our brand's favor. And I would highly doubt one of my employees would be, you know, willing and assisting in conducting that. Now, let me, you know, you have bad apples, right? You know, you harp some employees and they turn out to do bad, and you release them, and you bring them on the next one. So I just want to testify to that, that we are very, very strict on those components. And redeveloping this site would allow us to be more active in stopping these, you know, drug loitering and, or so, because now we're going to be using that premises on a daily basis, on an hourly basis. So having this approved, I can for sure certify that this problem will be addressed with this result of this happening.
Have you, have you personally, during that this location, seen your attendants and where they sit in reference to the pumping of the gas?
I guess I have.
And where, where do you usually find them sitting?
So the, let me address that twofold. One, we have a group of individuals that we started off with, which are not too happy with their services, with they were relieved of their duties. We have a new gentleman who, actually, new crew who works there now, and they're required to sit outside in front of the building, to let you below where you are open. The previous set of crews that we had were not conforming to the standards that I have set forth, and they were relieved of their duties on, if I may recollect my memory, it was about two and a half, three months ago. They were, they were relieved of their duties. I think about two months ago.
I, I mean, where do you see them sit when you approach, get there? I mean, I know you're saying you see them sitting outside. Is it outside by the front door of the-
If here's a convenience store, if here's a convenience store, the current crew that we have has a chair right out front, right next to the door, right before you go into the service area garage, that's where they currently are and should be seated. I usually drive by about once, try to do about once a day, to make sure I'm not in the site. The current, the crew that we have hired with us, just as an administrator, they were not-
I, I know I drive by, I don't drive by every day, but I drive by, and it's usually that guy is sitting in a chair underneath the Shell sign out by Easton Avenue.
He follows the shape of the sign.
I mean, you know, that, that, to me, doesn't make very profession or anything of that sort.
I do apologize for that. You know, again, employees, there's something we encounter a lot in every industry. You know, so when the site is redeveloped, one thing that allows us to have two people minimum inside out to watch over one another. So that will address a lot of the issues. It is very unprofessional to sit. I mean, if that's fine, I will have that addressed. But I do want to bring to the board's attention that having non-performing employees are really common in every industry that you go to. But having a better operation is going to help with that.
Let me ask you a question. As a self, on, you said you would typically have two employees, correct? Is one supervisory and the other not?
Yes, so the person working inside is on a supervisory position, because there's a lot more to do inside the store than there is to do outside the store. So those individuals are looking for one another to assure that everything's going to be right.
So let me ask this question. Should the board take, view this application favorably? Are you open to some conditions as to the subject of approval, that your supervisor employee needs to walk the site, you know, every hour or so, two hours, whatever it is, to make sure, including the rear of the property, and to make sure that your, your other employee is properly located and, you know, waiting people to get gas or come to the store?
I would be, I would more than willing to agree to such, such condition.
Is he going to leave the store unattended to make these walks?
No, 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 no. I'm asking whether, I was asking the applicant whether he would agree to some stricter conditions, so that supervisor on site is monitoring everything going on on the site as well as off the site.
The way we do it currently at other facilities, which aren't inside in, at store and gas-operated, is a person, because you have one person's outside the store. Since this is very fairly close to the store, they watch the store while other one conducts a walk or reports any suspicious findings. That's something we're more than willing.
And then, one of the last points you brought up was, construction workers are paying to park in that parking lot right now. Is that true?
Yes, so there's the, there's a construction going on down on Easton Avenue, you know, the project manager along with, I can't testify or recall exactly the individual that was with the project manager, was from, I guess, the planning or aspect of the building which is being built. And they asked us to allow us to use their parking since it's inconvenient for them to park on the street which blocks parking. So we have told them that until we've re-zoned and we get operational, that you can, because they're not, they're not using those parking spaces currently. So we said you can use those parking spaces to-
Well, you know that that property is not zoned for that, correct? It is not zoned for you to use it as a parking lot. It's only zoned to be used for parking for that business.
Yes, that will, so once we're, we're assured, there's no cars being parked at that premises besides the one which you're using the convenience store with.
Now, you're saying-
Adds up right now. You're in violation of the zoning law for that, for that property adds up right now.
I'll add that credit to my, I'll add that credit to my apologies.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question, real quick. Looking at the residents, what kind of, I mean, if they start seeing things like activity or dirt or rats impacting their quality, like what report do they have? Who do they get a hold of to bring this up?
Yeah, so if I may, there is a dedicated website that we use, which is called BreakMyGPSStore.com, which is broadcast on the front of the store, which you can actually visit one of you guys if you have a smartphone on you. You can visit one of our locations, which you can select an address and report any issues that you may have. That report gets sent to twenty-two individuals throughout our organization to investigate a matter that they may be disstored, implemented throughout our current existing operations. On top of that, we do have pest control services, we use Terminix for all of our stores, we have a contract with them. So they will be spreading these locations on a, and they use it on a monthly basis. So we will continue to do that at this location as well. On top of that, having a full-fledged op, when I say full-fledged, fully operated facility will allow us to have more avenues to control a lot more of the business activity.
Is there any reason why you can't start that now? I understand you all, for example, someone else, I guess, is doing the operating, but is there any reason why you can't deal with it now?
Yeah, so currently, the way the business sits, it is not profitable, I'll be very honest. In this industry, having just gasoline is, can't make things meet. So I, you know, from a company standpoint, yeah, you know, we're making sure that we're doing everything on our power. Because right now, essentially, you could just close a business down until we got it approved. And that would alleviate concerns to ten times more of a degree. But you want to get the, at least have someone there who can at least supersede the site. Because we're there now, so of course it's going to deter some people, and you can't do anything. But if the stores will be operating, we can, we can invest a lot more of our time and resources to correct a lot of issues. From a business standpoint, you know, it's not worth just opening as a gas station. But with having a store there, it can help us to mitigate a lot of the concerns of the citizens.
Well, let me ask this question, I think, just to follow up on your question. I think what, what the board is concerned about is the resident's ability to communicate with someone immediately and effectively, correct?
Right, but right now, everything I'm hearing seems to be, once the store is built.
No, I understand that. So my question to you, Sir, is are you open now to providing information, contact information to the residents, if they can get it directly?
Yes, on record, I'm willing to give my cell phone number, personal cell phone number.
Okay, but will you do anything to correct it?
I will. So if there's an issue which is broad, so we take steps forward to rectify, like the car situation, right? It was brought to my attention, I did everything in my power that I could to have it, it didn't be personal to have that removed. There was, went very far, taken over, someone ran right into our door, I had that board up first, I went up there at night, at midnight, and did it myself. Because, you know, even though it's not within our scope, it might have broken, you know, some, but I tried to do everything. I personally can't get it done. But as of today, at this moment, I am willing to give my cell phone number. And if any resident has an issue of any sort, I'll get that corrected within forty-eight hours. Usually, that's how long it takes me to send somebody out to correct any issue that may, they may have.
Including questions?
Anything at all of the sort.
Let me answer this question. In terms of local police, would you be willing to, again, follow the police department, indicating that, you know, it's important to be sensitive to somebody, somebody, like criminal activities that's ongoing? And please provide that information to the residents, so that they're aware that you're making those calls and the police is coordinating with you.
Yes, so on the record, the police force does have our number. I was once called at two thirty A M. because there was someone inside the building, and they wanted my authorization to do something. I actually jumped down at two thirty A M. and had met with the police officer to give my authorization to remove them from my building, and said they were an employee, but they were not. So I am working with the local police office currently, and I'm willing to take that effect to a higher degree, that's correct. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to recommend to you, if the board's concerned is that there are employees that are sort of sitting in random places and it sort of has an unprofessional look, which you might consider is asking the applicant to add a kiosk to the area between the two pumps, so that their, the gas employee person can stay in the kiosk when the car's coming for, if you live in these, these areas right there.
If I may, if I may address, that is something that we definitely can do. I didn't propose that, just that the areas that you have to work with, because I think you might, you might hit a car. But once the store is built, if that is something that we can do, my employee, you know, they're loaded, it's, it's heated or cooled right inside the building, and the walk between the store and the pumps is literally less than, than ever at this room. So they can easily see if the car is there and they walk right outside. But currently, they don't have the facility to do so. But if that is approved, then that will get addressed. I thought, I think for having those kiosks, but I think just the way the property sits in the area that we're in is great help, very small.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others, anyone else? Please state your names, spell your last name.
Andrew Marks Spina, S.P.I.N.A.
S.P.I.N.A.?
Yes, sir.
Andrew?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear or inform to the whole truth and nothing about the truth, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Can you state your address for us, please?
My residency is fifty-four Hassard Street, apartment C six, in Brunswick, New Jersey. I currently own and operate a business at one eighteen Easton Avenue. I've been a consecutive resident of New Brunswick for fifteen years, and I've been a business owner for five on Easton Ave, for five years on Easton Ave. I currently, I used to be down towards Easton and Somerset, and I moved to one eighteen about a year and a half ago, specifically due to a few of the issues that John addressed, namely homelessness, it's not even really homeless, it's more loiters and drug addicts. Nonetheless, I appreciate your time tonight. And what I would just like to voice is, I have no confident, confidence in the applicant's ability to follow through and execute on everything that they're presenting tonight. It all seems very appropriate and fine, but I have no confidence in their ability. And if you look at all of the employee issues that have so far been presented to you, I think it really reflects more on their judgment or lack thereof. I personally, I'm at my store six to seven days a week. So I'm pretty much, I have a full frontal view of this property fifty, sixty hours a week. Okay? And in that, in that time that I've observed, what I see is previously employees smoking by the gas pumps. Also, I would just like to address his issue about the crew and the employee handbooks. This business has one employee that works every single day, every shift, which, I'm not a lawyer, but that's a flagrant violation of basic labor law. And what my concern is, is that this young man who works there day in and day out, from opening to close, and ladies and gentlemen, I get there at eight A M. and I leave at eight P M. And this person is always there before me and there when I go home. I worry that they're going to be tired, exhausted, and they're working with combustible and dangerous chemicals. What, what could happen? Furthermore, what we really have is absentee ownership at its worst. That, this block of Easton Ave where we're all located, we're very connected, we're very much like a community. We look out for each other. And this business just exemplifies absentee ownership. And I also, with my fellow residents, have a strong concern of the quality of life and how it will decline if this business is allowed to proceed. And I know, I know businesses have employees that are rotten apples, or that might not work out, but it reflects on the employer who hired them. Okay? And I don't have any confidence in their ability to follow through. This is all sudden, this is all nice and good, I don't think it's going to work out the way they're saying. And I like how they, they continue to add stipulation, stipulation, stipulation. Okay? Now, that's really what I wanted to address. Also, no one's really mentioned the fact that, I believe there was a homicide or an aggravated assault associated with this property in July, when one of their previous employees, who I think they've let go, ran, ran someone over with their vehicle. I have no, no evidence to back this up, but rumor is that that young person did, did die. So I think it was, I saw, actually, how there was a drug deal going bad, I believe. A bunch of kids ran out of the property, someone jumped in a car and ran someone over. Again, that's just rumor on the street, but I think it bears some note and it bears some listening, so.
Does anybody else have some questions? So you currently operate a business on Easton Avenue, what type of business exactly?
Is it vinyl record store.
It's a vinyl record store?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you don't sell any food items or any-
No, sir.
Okay. Have you filed any complaints with the local police department on activity at this location?
Uh, no official filings, but I've spoken to numerous law enforcement officers in the city and expressed my concern to them directly.
But you never filed a police report, never?
Not at this time.
Okay. With regard to the issue of, you said there was someone that, that was an alleged homicide, do you have any-
Oh, either a homicide or aggravated assault. Someone was running with a vehicle. There looked like a drug transaction that went bad. The, the drug dealing was coming from their prior employees. It was called, it's sort of what they call a snatch and grab. Someone grabbed something, ran out of the kiosk storefront and-
Did you have any documentation to provide, any?
I have to go to the police department and-
That's not what I'm asking, I'm asking you right now, since you're standing here now.
No.
Okay, so your understanding is, you heard a rumor to that effect, that you have no documentation to provide to the board, right?
Yeah, that's how I prefaced it.
Okay. And as far as you're, you're witnessing an alleged criminal activity, you've never filed a complaint with the, with the local police department? And why is that?
Uh, because it's hard for the police to do it in action unless they physically catch the criminal, the criminal activity being committed at that moment. So I can call and complain, and they come by, there's nothing they can do, because there's nothing to observe, it's already been done.
So even though many of the residents are complaining about illegal drug act, alleged drug activity, you've never- you've never notified the police department, Bishop, perhaps?
Oh, yes.
Institute, that's what I'm asking, did you call the police department and file a complaint, or notify them?
No official filing, spoken and directly verbally in person.
And what, and what was the outcome of that?
The outcome is, unless we see it happen, there's nothing we can do. So it's sort of a catch twenty-two. Any other questions? Thank you for your time this evening.
One person's name?
What we don't, we still have the stores, we talk it together.
Husband and wife?
Yes.
So you can complete each other's sentences?
Please state your name, spell your last name.
My name is Ahmed, last name is Zora.
Please spell that.
A.R.O.R.A.
You swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Please state your address and source, please.
One zero nine Eastern Avenue, University.
Thank you, good to see you.
Good evening. I own Butler Post Store, one oh nine Eastern Avenue.
Excuse me, sir, could you speak a lot louder?
Yes. I own Butler Post Store, one oh nine Eastern Avenue, University, since nineteen ninety-seven. And I think if we get one more new store, it's gonna hurt everyone. I'll, I'll give you the list of stores they closed last six years. Daisy Shopper, he closed in two thousand fourteen. At your doorstep on College Ave, he went to small location because he couldn't pay the rent. Radus Mart, one sixty Eastern Avenue, he closed the store in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Fresh Grosse, which is right here, they closed three times. So I think if we get one more new store, it's gonna hurt everyone. That's all I wish.
It's like hardship for everyone, including us.
You would have to put your name on the record?
Oh, sorry, sir.
Let, let you test me, that's okay, that's okay. Anybody, just, just so I understand, what type of business do you own, convenience store? It's a convenience store, and where is that located again?
One oh nine Eastern Avenue.
So your primary objective is you think that this is, viewed as competition, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public have any questions, comments, concerns?
My name is Terry Finkelstein.
You swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do. I'm the attorney for Mr. Rora and his wife, Mina. And I'd just like to bring you back to the variance that is being asked for here. Over here, you're gonna have five cars.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple things, number one, I don't know, is Mr. Finkelstein, I'm not sure why he was sworn in, is he testifying as an expert, or I don't understand, number one, and number two, if he's going to refer any exhibits, I think we need to understand what he's referring to, so that the record is clear. But I'd like to first understand why he was sworn in, because I don't know if he's giving testimony, but that's...
I'm not giving testimony.
Well...
I'm just pointing out the zoning issue that the client's on, presented.
Well, I would request that you please refer to an exhibit, so they can identify it for the record.
Exhibit A zero zero one.
No, that's not what that is.
No, what is it then? Where's the exhibit number, please?
Those are the architectural plans that were submitted by the applicant.
Okay, is there an exhibit number on it?
I believe it was A three.
There's no number on it. It's very tough to...
A two would be the architectural plans, A three would be the two photographs, fair enough. And that's A one that you're looking at now, so I don't know which exhibit you want to refer.
Okay, let's refer to A one. There's going to be five spots here. And this building here, and right now, the zoning is six point five feet, because there's very few cars there. There are going to be many, many cars, and the zoning is thirty feet.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have to object, because if Mr. Finkelstein wants to put an expert on to address the nature and the justifications of the variance, I don't have a problem with that. But I do have an objection with Mr. Finkelstein testifying as a planner. So I want to understand where he's going with this, if he'd like to bring an expert up, that's fine, if he'd like to cross-examine my planner, or my engineer, or my architect, again, no problem, I just don't understand what exactly he's accomplishing here, so...
You're just setting out what the...
Mr. Chairman, so far, I don't think Mr. Finkelstein has been providing any testimony, and certainly not putting it in terms of a summary, that would be an expert's summary. As soon as he starts opining about whether there's a planning, there is no planning justification for certain variance being granted, certainly the chair can step in. At this point, all I hear Mr. Finkelstein talking about is, these are the variances that are being sought.
Fair enough, I have no, I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. And anyway, right now, it's six point five feet, plus it's an existing use for the gas station. But now that they've opened up the can of worms, it is thirty feet in the normal situation in order to get the variance. I just want the board to be aware of that. It's a very, very big difference.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could have my planner address that issue, frankly. Because I believe our planner testified that that is a pre-existing non-conformity, correct?
Correct, it's a pre-existing non-conformity use, and it's for the gas station that's currently operating right now. The convenience store, which we're proposing, is an approved use in the zone.
Thank you.
Can I ask him some questions now, that he's testified?
Can I have a question?
Sure.
So I'm confused, because the parking spots that are going to be provided are not for the gas station, because why would you need parking spots for a gas station, it would be for the convenience store.
I, I thought the six point five feet they was talking about was for the side property line for the driveway.
Right.
That's what the variance is, and that's what the deviation is.
Yeah, the applicant informed to the parking, the number of parking spaces, but that's not what the attorney was communicating. So I wanted our planner to confirm that the variance that Mr. Finkelstein is referring to is pre-existing non-conformity, we're not exacerbating that, that's the point.
Right, the six point five feet is from, is over on the side, on Prosperous Street, for the driveway coming out onto there.
I believe you're totally clear.
The curb and parking spots are not on Prosperous Street. The curb, if I'm correct, they're on the, the other, the residential side on Eastern Avenue. They are not on the Prosperous side of the, of the property.
They're on the east...
Right, but the six point five feet that we're talking about was for the drive, exit driveway.
Driveway, not the park.
So I think the objecting attorney has, is mixing apples and oranges. The six point five feet does not have anything to do with the parking spaces, it has to do with the exit driveway. So...
So then, the five parking spots, well, let me ask a question, then, the five parking spots that are going to be provided on the, on the side of the convenience store, how big are those parking spots gonna be?
I'll have our engineer talk about that, there's actually seven parking spots.
It's seventy, that's what I thought?
No, 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 Paul, no.
Okay, that's right.
No, the five park, you are correct, we have five spaces on the right side of the building, which is the east side of the building.
The residential side?
The residential side of the building. Originally, there were eleven spaces in that area, so we are reducing that down to five spaces in that area. Originally, there were ninety-degree head-on spaces, so as you drive in, the lights would be in the residential side. What we have is parallel spaces, A five twenty-two, typical spaces. So you, you drive in, you drive by, you go in the space, so the headlight will be pretty much to the back or to the, to the other side, to the north, right into the residential area. But the A five twenty-two, the other two spaces on the other side, by, on the left-hand side of, yes, between the, the store and the street, and there's two spaces, one of them is ADA space, and one of them is just going through the space. But the exit five spaces is, as you're coming in, the six and a half feet again, the attorney is mixing, so the six and a half feet is the, the distance from the curb line to the property line as you're coming out from Prosperous. Got nothing to do with the parking spaces.
It's the driveway.
It's a driveway going out, and that's a pre-existing condition.
Just so the record's clear, sir, let me, let me just refer, clarify to your question. My understanding is that the current ordinance, which is seventeen oh four, oh four DVA, says entrances, exits shall not be closer to any residential district line than thirty feet. And right now, it's pre-existing six and a half, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that has nothing to do with the parking spaces?
Nothing to do with parking spaces.
Thank you.
We do not have any parking spaces, variances whatsoever.
How, why does that driveway on that side of the property?
As you're coming out?
Yes.
Uh, right now, right behind the building, it's about twelve feet, and we're improving that to eighteen feet. So twelve track for the lane and six for a strip area. So that's the area where we are removing the, the back of the building, and the tank and the entries.
What, what's the normal size of the parking spot, is it in time, like twenty itself?
Yeah, we have A, A five twenty-two and nine five twenty-two, that's how...
Your ordinance allows A five twenty-two for parallel spaces?
Yeah.
Okay, parallel spaces.
Twenty-two is pretty spacious.
I was worried about the exit, that's all, sir.
No, because it's a parallel space, and then the driver's side is...
Definitely, alright, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Anyone else in the public have any questions, comments?
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Frank Scio, S.C.I.O.T.T.O.
You swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
May I proceed?
Frank, do your, your address, please.
My address is one zero eight Eastern Avenue, that's my business, I also own one sixteen Eastern Avenue. Just to, I'm there seven days a week on Eastern Avenue, I've seen the property. Since you've taken occupancy there, it's, it's gone severely downhill, that was a successful business for forty-plus years. While it was an old business, it was well-maintained, wasn't a weed, not a broken window, bathroom doors open four or five o'clock AM. It, it really has fallen, just repair, and now with all these plans that everything's gonna be all well and new, a lot of the problems, you know, you call us, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna make it better with this new building, it's pretty hard to swab. The other thing is, is the twenty-four hours that got brought up. You know, we are hoping, late there, we see the amount of foot traffic that's on, goes on Eastern Avenue between two AM and three AM. And having that business open twenty-four hours would be a huge detriment to the neighborhood, as well as worrying about the vacancies and the, you know, some of the undesirables hanging out there, at, at that time, would really change the, the neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, anyone else have any questions?
I just wanna agree with that, I think that twenty-four hours would be problematic, first of all, for a lot of your own employee safety issues if this ever went through. And secondly, because I could see somebody really getting hurt, because there is a lot of foot traffic and intoxicating to young people.
If I may, if I may, uh...
To signify, maybe, if we have a...
Sure, Said, Kazim?
Yeah, we should.
Just to certify that on the record, as, as part of the condition, if it's granted, I am, I, I am agreed, and I am okay with opening six to ten as I suggest, so we will not be open twenty-four hours on the record.
Is it possible for us to have that as a pre-existing condition, if we approve?
Through the chair, the, if the limitation of hours was a condition of the approval, I would make a recommendation to the board that it be part of a deed restriction as well, so there'd be, the conditions of approval would be not only the resolution of approval, but also restricting the property by deed, so that if this owner sells the property at some point, it's always going to be just operational from six to ten.
And if I may just address the previous objector's point about the previous owner, so the previous owner was evicted from the premises for a failure to pay the mortgage, not only debt to the previous landlord. And so the store was closed for about a year prior to be taken over, and it was unattended for a year, completely, no supervision whatsoever. So once we signed our lease agreement, you know, we started to, you know, just have the place operable during that meantime. So I, I just wanna say that I know there's a lot of problems present at the facility, and that's why this project alone is gonna be a great amount of investment on our end, into the property. And I would not be authorizing or willing to make such an investment, to increase in a place if I was gonna have it run down. You know, no one's gonna wanna come to an undirty, filthy place, you know, I don't think any of my customers wanna shop in a place which is not suitable to standards. So if I'm gonna be investing, you know, close to half a million dollars into the property, I think by all means, keeping it friendly, fresh, and enjoyable would be the best of my concerns, just to recruit investment, so I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Are you saying that the gas station was closed for up to a year before you rehired it?
I, we took it in two thousand and eighteen November. From our understanding of, and I could be wrong, but it was closer about a few months, or actually, if you, if you mind, I can go outside and check, I think about four or five months, seven months, and, and still started closing down, legally, I know he shut down a little before, though, I think it was around six or seven months until it was closed, but I could be wrong, or not, but I can confirm that. But I can certify that it was closed for a period of time, prior to be taken over, so I didn't want to open a start, operable business.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, anyone else have, yeah, I was just looking at cell phones, sorry.
Just, maybe, it was not...
Yeah, just with your name, that kind of works, because we came for everything.
It's John Varga.
That's him.
It was not closed for a year. The guy who owned the tire, Warno, one thirty, took it over from the guys that owned the shell when they retired. They ran it for approximately a year, and then I guess things weren't working out. So I'm gonna say it was probably closed maybe three or four months, that's more accurate than a year, okay? But I'm closer to the ballpark.
Alright.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the public have any questions? Alex, please come forward, state your name.
Charles Cradell.
The, you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Mrs. Lee, could you spell your name for me? Charles Cradell, K.R.A.T.O.V.I.F.
Do you speak English?
Uh, no, I'm a resident of New Brunswick, second ward, and I...
Always given your business address, that's fine.
Just, oh, if, if, if you insist on having my address, I'm happy to provide it, my residence is at one forty-three C.D.M. Street. And I just wanted to follow up on a couple of statements made by the applicant, first of all, he said he was willing to give his cellphone number on the record, so could I have that number, please?
Hey, Charles, you know what, I think if anyone wants his number, see him after the thing, he could give it to each and every individual that way.
Oh, he's just, he said he was willing to give it on the record, so while we're here, on the record.
I don't know, I'll, I'll be nice and say, it shouldn't go strictly totally public unless each individual wants it, you know what I'm saying?
Well, exactly, he said, he said he's willing, so... Okay, I see, he said he's willing, sorry.
I don't know, but it, you know, I think, I think it's just to say that, you know, he's open to giving any resident in that area that wants his phone number, that he will...
Even Sid Amstree? Good enough. And then I, the other thing, I was just curious about the zoning violation that you guys listed the evidence about. So there's, I guess, a construction project down the road, is this the nine-story one?
Is this the, the nine-story one with the infamous crane that you guys approved earlier this year?
Yes, that's the construction site that he re-?
Okay, and so he testified that there was someone involved on the planning side of that development that approached him about using his property in violation of the zoning law?
I mean, the construction management people on-site property came in. That's not a planning side.
Well, I'm just using what he said. So, so instead of guessing what he said since he's here, could he, could he tell us who it was that, that approached him?
Yes, uh, Chairman, you are correct. What you stated, the person who approached us was from the, uh, development of the, uh, construction building who wanted to, he said it was, it's conflicting with him, them, property, cause of the renovation, the shifted traffic, if you could use their space, I agree.
Okay, so it was the general contractor, the structure tone, is the name of the company or?
Whoever's managing, uh, company that, for that building.
Okay. Well, I'll follow up after the meeting, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public have any, anyone comments or question? Same, uh, wait discussion. Okay, we have to speak up to the, uh.
Well, first of all, I think it's a quality of life issue. It's getting to a point where there's enough convenience stores on Eastern Avenue for people to get what they need. Uh, here the residents, and I hear that, uh, the entrance coming in and out is gonna be an issue. People are gonna pull in and buy a bag of chips and run back out again in five minutes, and a lot of people crossing Eastern Avenue, like walking on that sidewalk there. During school hours before the kids go to school and when they come home at night and so forth. I think it's getting to be, uh, a little crowded with convenience-type stores going on Eastern Avenue.
I just got one question for our board attorney, I guess. It says the existing gasoline sales is conditional use, so that means it could stay there no matter what, even if they close it down? Because I know sometimes you abandon conditional uses when you close down, and you don't use it for a certain amount of time, correct?
Right, that, that would be when there's an abandonment. In this case, uh, it appears that the application was submitted after the use which had ceased, but was not abandoned for a short period of time. However, the board is obviously considering the conditional use standards. It, the convenience stores permitted. If the applicant came in with just a convenience store, but the fact that there is a gas station also, they don't need all of the conditions of the zone, uh, puts it before this board to decide. One of the considerations, as your board members are discussing, are quality of life issues now that we have essentially two, two uses there. You know, the gas station, which is permitted with a convenience store, which is permitted. Gas station, which is conditional permitted.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to address your comments also. I mean, first of all, I think the applicant is very sensitive to what the residents are saying. I don't think anybody's, um, ignoring those comments. As a matter of fact, we agreed to meet with the residents, and they did take us up on that opportunity. Number two, your board attorney is correct. So for some reason, we decided to abandon the gasoline retail component. We came to the city for a convenience store. It's a permitted use under the zone. So the only reason we're here is because that ordinance goes back many, many years. I'm sorry, that, the gas station goes back many years, which, um, the gas station's been there for, what is it, I remember. And so the ordinance was, um, uh, was in place after that, so we just, there's pre-existing conditions, technical conditions that we don't meet. I think the applicants here, um, they've indicated that they are willing to invest significant amounts of dollars to rehabilitate and improve the site. I'm not sure that legally, and I'll refer to your, um, your counsel, but, um, the fact that you made a statement that, um, there's too many convenience stores on Eastern Avenue when that's a basis for your concern, um, it's a permitted use of the zone. So I would caution you on that. Um, and the only reason that the gas station is being kept and trying, and also being upgraded, is because it's there and it's existing. Um, and I think it would, and it is, it is a gas station that can be used by those obviously utilizing Eastern Avenue through the city. So it does have some value there. Again, I think the trend in the industry to refer from the applicants to have, uh, gasoline with a, with a convenience store component for that. Okay, this is just going to be within neighbors opposed to being on Route eighteen or Route one or Route twenty-seven. So that's, that's what I, that's what sort of I would say in response to your issue. Um, and again, it is, the convenience store is permitted in the zone, and we're only here because technically there's a few items under the conditional use for retail gas that triggers a conditional use. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, might I suggest that, uh, you may wanna ask counsel if he has any closing statements, so the board's discussion can be interrupted.
Sure.
Yeah, do you have a closing statement?
Sure, thank you. Um, so just to highlight, um, number one, I believe you've heard from the applicant's professionals as well as the applicant. I believe that the applicant has demonstrated the proofs of the municipal land use law for the use variance that saw it, which is a conditional use in this case. Um, you heard from the applicant's architect and engineer about the significant improvements to this property. Um, this applicant, um, is prepared to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars here into the city, number two. Um, they are aware that there are current activities which are inappropriate going on. The applicant's prepared to deal with all those, is prepared to engage with the residents, he's been working with the local police department. The applicant is not at all taking those lightly. Um, I think the board has some very pointed questions. The applicant's prepared to, uh, address any of the concerns by way of conditions of an approval. Limiting the hours, having onsite security, making sure that there is appropriate supervisory personnel on site, making sure that the cameras, security cameras are operating. None of that's existing now. And, you know, so the applicants here are trying to improve the situation. Um, and we're asking the board to look at that favorably. I mean, this is really not only just about the justifications for the variance. This is about trying to improve the situation, which we all know right now needs improvement. And I think the board, um, asked very pointed questions. Your staff has reviewed this very carefully, your planner and your engineer. Um, and I think we've addressed all the testimony items in all of your reports. So we're asking you, please, to act favorably upon this application. Thank you.
Okay, move to session.
I do, I have time. Um, if this, do you?
Guys, we have to speak up because we have a court reporter, and she cannot hear us, so we need to make sure that we speak loud enough so the whole, and the audience has to hear us, so.
All right. My statement would be that right now, this site is not going to improve the way it is. And at least if they are willing to put in the money, so that we have cameras, we have lights, there's, as we told. I would be in favor of that. My one concern is the traffic with pedestrians. That is a concern I do have. And I don't know if there's some way to kind of technology that if a car's getting ready to turn, some kind of light. You know, I've seen in parks, where if a car is turning into a parking thing on the pedestrian side, a light will turn red to let the pedestrian know. That is my only concern. But as far as the property itself, keeping going the way it is going, this is not going to improve the quality of life, it's even worse.
Yeah, I agree with, oh, I'm sorry, we're, okay.
My concern is, they've been running this business for eight, nine months now. And that is, that's their way of showing the public how they're gonna run a business, going forward. I mean, I, I don't care what the condition is now. The doors are left open, there's windows broken, there's, uh, loitering going on. That's your business. If that's happening now, is it gonna continue and is it gonna get greater?
And I don't, I don't think so, because if you're spending half a million dollars to bring a new building in, you're not gonna trash your own house.
So here's my concern. So I agree with you that, you know, right now, and I, and I hear everything the residents are saying, and I respect what they're saying. My concern is that they don't have to be here really to build a convenience store. So they could just close it down, the gas station, and have their convenience store up. So where does that leave? At least if we, at, at least here, if we get a deed restriction, they can't be open after ten, like, I'm thinking futuristic.
Right.
Because that's what I heard. So either way, they could do the convenience store, from what I'm hearing. So if we agreed to, if we make an agreement now, at least we get some of the things we want. But I agree with pedestrian safety. If there's some way to.
Indicate to pedestrian factors.
Yeah, you know. Because right now, it's disgusting the way it is, and there, there's a lot of problems. So I, I agree with that one hundred percent, and I'm trying to weigh on both the public and the applicant to see how we can try to make this work, if we can make it work.
I agree with you, sir.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, because if they just put up a convenience store, they could have it opened as long as they want, probably. I'm not thinking there's any restriction. We have to hear from our attorney on that.
Martin, is that correct, that if, um, say, say we turned it down because of whatever, for whatever reason, they took out the gas component, and they just opened up a convenience store, they then be able to have it open whatever hours they want it?
Uh, well, they'd still have to get site plan approved if they're making changes, so we'd be back before planning.
Maybe it's a deed restriction, it's on the property itself that's not on the deed, so.
Correct.
Correct.
So I guess we will go to the, um, conditions.
Before we do that, if I can just, one additional, uh, question that remained on the answer, that's the hours of delivery.
Oh, okay. Yes. Um, what, what would the hours of delivery be? Would it be like, because, I mean, if everyone knows, East Avenue is just a mess in the morning. A mess at four o'clock. Um, I would, I would suggest maybe hours of delivery like ten, two, ten.
I can, I can assert that. So the way they work is, we control our own fuel delivery schedule. So, um, I can briefly show you how the operation works. So when I book my fuel delivery, I put a timeframe, I want my fuel there by, and what timeframe, it gives us a three-hour window. So currently, you try to do it overnight, so that way there's less impact to travel, um, or to the public itself. So if you have.
As I understand it, you're looking for deliveries to be limited to the hours of ten o'clock in the morning to three o'clock in the afternoon, or overnight?
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest, though, it's only because of the traffic on East Avenue.
Well, I would prefer maybe ten o'clock to even two o'clock, because children get out of school at eight o'clock. And there's a school right there, and that would be problematic.
So if you can, you can do overnight without an issue, because trucks run twenty-four hours a day for fuel. So when I schedule my delivery, I can put it in the hours of, so currently we have it midnight to four A M.
But my question, what's that to the residents?
Yeah.
The residents who are surrounding this property?
Right, so are.
They're not gonna wanna hear a semi-fuel.
Right, so we can control that through our, uh, first, we can work with the residents where if you have some sort of restriction with our deliveries, uh, we can control that.
I think that's gonna be up to the, what the board senses on that, and I think the applicant's saying they'll live with that restriction. Whatever, if you're comfortable with later in the afternoon, or so that after-school hours, but before real evening, whatever works.
I think it's not too much, probably.
And, and you said that you can, it's usually within a three-hour.
So it's within three-hour window, and that's when we can schedule it, so if we can put it, I can't tell you by the minute, hour, or minute. Uh, but within an hour or so, absolutely.
But if you told the deliveries that it could only be done between ten and two, they would come between those hours?
Absolutely, they have to. They have to, because it's, it's electronic port, and I can show you the way it works. Because when you go online and the, uh, plan order, right, the trucks are only, um, allowed to fill up on the terminal during that period of time. So they can't just go pull fuel from any job, just.
So what time do they deliver fuel at?
So I usually have, currently, um, it says, I'm getting about one delivery a month, um, just because how slow the business is. Um, so last month I got it, it was at nine forty-five P M.
So it's at the evening?
It was at the evening, just happened to be, because I'm not controlling that to a certain degree right now. Uh, but one of the things which I agreed to with my fuel supplier, a part of this, and I can, we foresee issues of this nature a lot, so they did, they did put us on that program, the controller of fuel delivery timing. And I can, and am willing to share that with you now, how that process works.
Huh? The public did not complain about that?
No.
Yeah, because right now we're getting.
So my other question then would be, what about, um, the convenience store deliveries?
So they're, they're all about the same thing. So essentially, the same company controls those logistics of the deliveries. So if we put it between hours of five and three, they're gonna make sure, or whatever the timeframe may be, they'll make sure that the deliveries are only delivered during that timeframe. That's our premium with the, so logistics are stable.
Sure. All right.
Thank you.
Now, or events, would sense, uh, any answering questions and ask back and forth? Do we have to look back up to the public?
This was just the board's, uh, filling in the circle of deliveries intended to.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. All right. Um, I guess we can move forward with, um, conditions of approval.
Sure. So if the board were to act favorably, I'd recommend the following conditions of approval. Compliance with the terms of the D N R engineering report dated June eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Submission of all necessary improvements in or cross-access statements for review and approval by this board attorney and city engineer. Payment of a site performance bond in amount to be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in amount to be calculated pursuant to city ordinance. Payment of more water, sewer, water, sewer, and road opening fees pursuant to city ordinance. Issues of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required. Compliance with the terms of the big now planning consultants report dated July fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Monetary contribution for the city's tree preservation trust fund in amount to be terminated by the ordinance. Planning escrow review fund for all anticipated post-approval reviews. Payment of all outstanding taxes and or water sewer fees. Bill of this county planning board approval or waiver. Rehold soil conservation district approval or waiver. Submit engineering site planning, apply to any changes required by the planning or engineering memos. One of the city standard comments is a submission of a Title Thirty-nine parking enforcement agreement, standard petition of approval. All utilities and other sole site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachments in the public right of way shall require city council approval. All construction statements shall be done onsite, unless an encroachment allowing a public right of way is approved by city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall host the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the director of public works. Tracking pads shall be installed in all construction exits. Replacement of any damaged streets, curves, and sidewalks per the direction of the city engineer. The application includes relief for conditional use standard. Driveway width. Four existing signs. Additional conditions of approval would be that no vaping products will be sold. Uh, their hours of operation would be from six A M. to ten P M., and that would be by means of deed restriction. The applicant will install a camera system to monitor and record the site. Applicant will install no parking will tow signage and no overnight parking signage on the site. The applicant will provide supervisory personnel to monitor the employees. The applicant will work with city staff to improve pedestrian safety on the site. And delivery shall, shall be between the hours of ten A M. and two P M.
I believe that's all, correct?
Uh, two additional conditions, I don't know, just, just to make sure that I have the right ones. Uh, the board had also indicated that they, uh, would like to see a kiosk between the, the pumps. And so those plans need to be amended and shown, and then plans to be submitted to, uh, the city prior to the issuance of any building permits. Uh, the board discussion and questioning also indicated that the board wished to have, I'm gonna take some liberties here, but, uh, I would suggest perhaps hourly policing of the site for litter, for vagrants, for, uh, illegal parking, and to ensure that employees are in fact servicing the cars, the, uh, the fueling station. Uh, there was also, and I apologize if this was already repeated. The applicant indicated that the, uh, the facility will be monitored by twenty-four-hour camera with signage indicating that the monitoring is taking place and it's being recorded. There will be no vehicle idling at any time. Those are the additional conditions of that.
So can I just, the kiosk, um, I was, I'm confused. I thought that, that was just for now, that when the convenience stores built, there was going to be something where the.
Like, I mean, I, I know they said that the island that the gas pumps sit on, it's just, it's too small, but, you know, that's something that, you know, like, they said that they would have, like, for in front of whatever, the person would be right inside the door of the.
Yes, something by the convenience store.
Yeah, inside the convenience store, but, you know, I, I believe that's what his testimony was, it wasn't.
I thought that's, yeah.
Put one in the island because it was very tight. I know it's not a wide island, it's probably only, I think, four feet wide. It's, it is very small. I mean, you, you'd have to be a small person to basically fit in a key. I mean, you, you'd have to be a small person to basically put in a kiosk on that island. Yeah. On that island. As long as they, you know, we, we have it existed, something that the employee will be visible to the, to the pumps and-
To the public.
Yeah, to the public, you know, instead of sitting out like a big sign.
And the board also may wanna consider that the gas station operations not be permitted during the construction of the convenience store.
Would you agree to that?
Yes, that is absolutely a mandatory aspect of the construction. We would not be operating gasoline sales during the period of construction, just for the safety of our employees. And plus, of course, when you're in, you don't want any heavy equipment, you know, falling left and right. So the way for the site being constructed will be fenced or some sort of enclosure.
Okay.
So that's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Does that have to be added to?
I think our, you don't have that in the, in your-
In the resolution, there's a-
Okay. All right, so then, do we have a? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll go on motion to approve.
Evelyn Espona?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
No.
Sue McGalligan?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Nancy Carpool?
Yes.
Abbott Adorno?
Yes.
John Cox?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your work and we look forward to working with you.
Well, I just wanna say thank you very much. You are a big in our company, which soon will be very popular. We have a lot of business, oh, we've got drinks, so you can all share that. You, you won't, you got my, you got my word. I appreciate it.